Always meet in this room years ago. And a number of us can remember that.
No, I think it here too.
We had an old table at the back end. The commissioner sat at that table and there were carvings in the table. And I think somebody had had some tough time with the table. Robert, you remember that? Kind of reminded me of the old butcher table.
I remember the table.
But it's nice to have the other room, but it's been used for a training for our tax and assessment department today. So that's why we're crowded in here. But I remembered this room being much larger when we had meetings. So don't know why. Maybe we didn't have as many. Awards and recognition. I will give that to you to cover today in the ever. A thank you note.
We do. We've got a thank you note from another of the four eaters who demonstrated livestock. Thank you for adding some money to buy Milton Freewater. Apparently had a hog down there called Thunder. And so it was a great project. They thanked us for the support that we provided to the show. We do that to three shows around the county. The Milton Freewater Show, the Pendleton Show, and the auction at the fair in Hermiston. So it really helps to level out some of the pricing. You know, if I was one that had livestock at that fair going to auction, I'd want to be number one because the auction action is a lot quicker and it kind of goes from there downhill. So this helps to level that a little bit. Also in the congratulations to Bob Walder for being selected for the REAL, Real Oregon, Resource Education and Agriculture Leadership. That's a prestigious position to be put in, Bob, to go down and acquire. We're expecting a return on this investment, of course, that we're sending you down there to. Do you want to say just for a moment about the class and what it is?
Yeah, so this is the inaugural class for the Real Oregon Program. It's being modeled after similar programs in Washington and Idaho. But what it stands for is Resource Education and Agriculture Leadership. So we spend, there's 30 people that'll participate in the class in five different sessions located throughout the state. And we'll be learning about agriculture and timber production throughout the state. And it also has a leadership component to it. So looking forward to the networking opportunities and just learning about different issues and importance to the state.
And we're supporting Bob's attendance at that through some funding in the economic development budget. So his attendance will be supported. There are only three. First, let me just explain that there are, in this class, 10 individuals directly involved in production agriculture, three involved in timber production, 11 from agribusinesses or natural resources, and six from local, state, or federal agencies. And Bob is one of those six. Two others from Yumitilla County were named Tom Devonu and Sam Taylor from ECO. Tom Devonu from Yumitilla County and Sam Taylor from ECO. So we're really well represented there. Congratulations, Bob.
Since Bob's on the stage, I'd like to add something. He's been doing the conceptual drawings for the Pendleton Enhancement Project relative to the movement of the Eighth Street Bridge, the fence and all that. And the council had been concerned about being able to see what that project was going to look like. So his latest round of drawings appeared last night at the Public Pendleton Development Commission and resulted in a $20,000 allocation from his PDC. So they liked what you put together.
Great. Thank you.
So Bob, congratulations, and not only congratulations, but thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay. Acknowledgement, or are there other?
That's all I have.
Acknowledgements of minutes from October the 4th.
Chair, move approval of the minutes of October 4th.
Second.
Been moved in second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, at this time, we have two people on the agenda to do a quick, short public presentation. But this is a point in time in the meeting for public input. Is there anyone else that's not on the agenda? We do have a public hearing scheduled, so we're trying to move right along. And I think a couple of you are here for that public hearing. So anyone else besides, I know Dave Price is here. Eli is not here.
He's probably going to try to make it.
Okay. So with that, Dave, you're going to present some information?
Yeah. Since it's really quick, I have this handout here, which is a summary of a bill that's before Congress that I think is very important and it's important to counties of Oregon. And it has to do with the serious fire season that we all went through just this last year, this year. And a lot of acres burned up. Oregon lost about, I think the last count was 678,000 acres of our forest lands went up this year. And 8.2 million nationally, I think that was the last count. Of course, California is still going, so we don't know where that's all going to end up. But for fiscal '17, which ended on the 30th of September, the Forest Service had spent $2 billion in fire suppression. And of course, the meter is still running in California. Hopefully, that'll end soon. Now, there is a bill proposed in Congress, which is H.R. 2936. And I handed out a copy that's a good summary of the bill. It is written by the American Forest Resources Council. And because the bill is 86 pages long, so that summary really helps you kind of get through it and understand what it's all about. Now, the whole purpose of this bill is that after this fire year, we've had other severe fire years, but this one really got the attention of a lot of people nationally and in our state, especially when the Columbia Gorge burned up. So the public cry for do something is a little louder this time. And so Congress has introduced this bill, which is called H.R. 2936. And it was actually introduced before this fire season really got cranked up. And what it does is it gets into the process that's involved in doing forest management. And that's what it gets into. And it tries to streamline that process. And I've talked to many congressmen about this, and I tell them that their problem is that they have legislative paralysis, and you need to do something about that. And that's what this bill's trying to do. And the problem is, is that it's all based on your forest plan. If you've got an approved forest plan that says you can do forest management activities, then this gives you the authority to proceed. If it's not, then of course, this bill does not apply. The problem with that is, is in the forest plans of Oregon and Washington, which is Forest Service Region 6, there's roughly 1/3 of the forest base that is available for forest management, and there's 2/3 that's not. Now, in the 2/3 is like wilderness, rubless, and then there's countless other allocations that have developed over the years. So it's only 1/3. So it will not eliminate your big fires. It will help, but it won't eliminate. Okay. Now, the thing I want to point out is what is the backbone of the bill? The bill gets into the NEPA process, which is a process established National Environmental Policy Act, and it was signed off on by Nixon, actually, way back when. This process has become so cumbersome that when the Forest Service gets into a forest management activity, like salvage operations after the fire, and an example of that is the 2015 fire, the process was so complex. And then due to the Equal Justice Act, where the Forest Service pays for all legal costs, they couldn't afford to pursue the salvage of the 2015 fire that was over in the Troy area in northeast Oregon. And so they walked away from 8,000 to 10,000 acres of prime timberland that was available for salvage, but they couldn't afford to get through the process. And so that's what this bill is all about, is to streamline that process so that they can effectively get through the process in a reasonable amount of time and do the forest management that needs to be done, not only on fire salvage, but on, I guess you'd call it, fire management prevention type work too. And that's what it's about. Now, the importance to the county is, first, other than the fact of doing some forest management, which has been sorely lacking for a long time, is it changes the county receipts to the county in regards to a new technique the Forest Service has been using, and they call it the stewardship process. Now, the county does not, at this point, get 25% return receipts on stewardship projects. This bill will change that. And then they will get 25% of the receipts. The other big thing that happens in there is it uses a process called categorical exclusion, which has been available in the NEPA process for many years. And it changes that from a self-imposed restriction of you could only do a categorical exclusion on 250 acres to you can do it on 10,000 acres. And if you go through another process there and involve, you might say, the local governments and everything else, you could go up to 30,000 acres. And it also applies to municipal watersheds. Mill Creek Watershed is a good example of where this needs to be done. Because Mill Creek Watershed, it's only a matter of time until that watershed is gone. So anyway, that's what it does. It changes that. It also changes, for the western counties, the O and C thing. It dictates that O and C lands will return to the sustained yield plan that was in the O and C Act originally, so that those western counties can start to get the benefits of the O and C lands like they used to. Now, the difference is, O and C lands and O and C counties get 75% of the receipts rather than 25. So it's really a big deal for your western counties. The other thing it does is it gets rid of the Equal Justice Act, which is where anybody off the street can come in and take the Forest Service to court on a decision, and the Forest Service has to pay all legal fees. It gets rid of that. And so that's just a real quick rundown on what that bill is all about. What I'm asking the county is, is I'd like for you to become informed, of course, but I would like for you to visibly support this bill. And it needs to be done soon. If we do not move this bill through Congress within the very near future, it'll be gone. And then we'll have to go through this all again sometime in the future. So that's the purpose. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to try to deal with them.
I don't have a question, Dave, but to further kind of explain, the stewardship contracts, all that money goes to the Forest Service, to those districts that are doing those contracts at this time. Counties get none of that. And again, trying to get 25%. The other issue, we have, a county has, or an area has, two years, and that's all they have, to salvage timber. Beyond two years, the timber basically is no good. It's been permanently damaged to where it doesn't make good lumber production anymore. They could do some chipping of it, those types of things, but that's limited also because of category exclusions. Congressman Walden, Congresswoman Kathy McMorris Rogers, a number of our congressional staff had put together some of these. The Equal Justice Act, if there's a hearing or if there's a meeting for an objection of what's going on, those meetings are held in Washington, D.C., not in the area. And I made a request in our meeting on Monday with all the agencies, Forest Service, U.S. Fish and Wildlife, regulatory agencies, and I made this through Congressman Walden, that if there's an objection or an appeal, those meetings and hearings must take place in the district where the objection is being filed about. They file it at the federal level, but the meetings, if there's an objection for a fire in Baker County or in John Day or in one of those forests, the meeting has to take place in the forest supervisors' district. It's got to be on the Yumitilla, or it's got to be in the Willa Whitman or Mount here. So that makes it more accessible to people in the region. And a lot of the objections are filed from citizens from the states of all places, Vermont, Massachusetts, New York, and Maine. Those are the main areas where the objections and the appeals come from. And most of the time, those groups are receiving donations to file those objections. So it gets to be a moneymaker because heretofore, the Forest Service has been forced to pay all the legal costs. We're trying to get rid of that, and that's part of this bill going through Congress. So I hope that helps.
It seems like every good lobby presents the reasons why this should be supported, and then also provides what the arguments of the other side are and why they're not equally strong. We don't have time this morning, I don't think, to do that, but I'd be interested in hearing that position.
Well, you're exactly right. And there is opposition. There is strong opposition, and it's easy to find online. And me being a forest management person, you know, you read through that and you go, holy cow, how can anybody believe this? But they do throw it out there. They're very strong, very well-funded and organized, and they're persistent.
It's hard to find fault with some of these arguments.
Yeah.
As I say, a good lobby, a good lobby presents both sides. And I'd like to hear that other side at another time.
So what Dave is asking us to do is some type of a, maybe a support letter or something?
Yes.
Going back to our congressional staff, that says we are in support of this. I think most of the counties are doing something to this effect. AOC is involved in this also. So that, we won't take action on it today, Dave, but that's something we'll be working with through the board here and through AOC.
Good.
Some of our leading representatives in Washington are making some emotional statements about how they're fighting to save our forests. And yet historically, I have not seen in their voting record anything that they're really doing to save the forests. Where would they be on this?
Well, supposedly, the Oregon representatives, and I think that includes, and I know it includes Merkley, because I've heard from him, do support this.
Okay.
And the state of Washington seems to be very supportive too. The western states really don't seem to be the problem from the standpoint of the representatives in support. But further east you go, the further away, the support gets. And so anyway, I wanted to present that. And yes, there is strong opposition. It's not going to be easy. But the opposition, in my way of thinking from a forest management professional's position, it would be very hard to substantiate or defend. Yeah. So anyway, I appreciate it.
Dave, thank you for being here and presenting.
You bet. Thank you.
And as I said on the Blue Mountain Forest Plan, so I will give more information.
So are you going to construct a letter?
I can.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Get out of your way today.
Okay. The next item of business, the first one, and we do have people here for that, is co-adoption of the City of Hermiston. It's a map amendment. We have our planning staff here to give a report. And this is a public hearing. So at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing for the co-adoption of the City of Hermiston's ordinance, number 2246. And it's the Plan Map Amendment, number 120-17, the co-adoption between the City of Hermiston and Yumitilla County. It is 13.10 acres on the south side of West Getman Road. The city council has also adopted ordinance 2247, annexing that particular portion of property. The criteria is found in the Yumitilla County Development Code 152-750 and 152-2, 152.754, and the management agreement between the city and the county, City of Hermiston and the county. So at this time, I'm going to ask if we have any abstentions or conflicts of interest from either of my colleagues on this. Are there any declarations that need to be done at this time? Okay, I'm going to call for our staff report.
Thank you, Commissioner Gibbons. For the record, Bob Walder, Planning Director. So the hearing this morning is for co-adoption of the City of Hermiston's Plan Map Amendment. And the request is to adopt City Ordinance 2246, which amends their comprehensive plan from urbanizable to urban on 13.1 acres of land located on the south side of West Getman Road. I believe there's a map included in your packet. The property is described as tax lot 701, located in Township 4 North, Branch 28, Section 15. The Plan Map Amendment changes the designation from future residential to low-density residential. Subsequent to ordinance 2246, the city council also passed ordinance 2247, which annexed the property with a duplex residential or R2 zoning designation effective upon co-adoption of 2246 by this Board of Commissioners. This co-adoption is necessary because the City of Hermiston's comprehensive plan has two overarching designations within the urban growth boundary. Since the property is within the UGB, there is a mutual interest between the city and the county. The property associated with this request is currently zoned F1, future residential, which is considered urbanizable and managed by the county. If the property is switched over to an urban type of designation, in this case, low-density residential, it becomes part of the city's jurisdiction. So this essentially is a formality as required by the City of Hermiston's comprehensive plan in our joint management agreement, that we co-adopt areas of land that are within the UGB. We have to co-adopt the city's ordinance. So the city initiates the request, and then our job is to co-adopt that. And that's found in the Joint Management Agreement, Section E. Previous hearings, the Hermiston Planning Commission held a public hearing on August 9th and unanimously passed a motion to recommend approval to their city council. And then the council held a public hearing on August 14th and unanimously approved the Plan Map Amendment, and subsequently, like I said, adopted ordinance 2246. The county's first evidentiary hearing for the co-adoption was held before the Planning Commission on September 28th. And during the hearing, the commission heard testimony from proponents and opponents of the co-adoption, and a summary of those meeting minutes, and testimony entered into the record was included in your packet. The Planning Commission ultimately recommended approval of the co-adoption and recommended that to the Board of Commissioners. So in conclusion, the board has an obligation to approve or deny the City of Hermiston's co-adoption request. The only item for consideration is the co-adoption of the comprehensive plan map amendment, changing the designation from urbanizable to urban. All subsequent actions taken by the city, including the ordinance 2247, which annexed the property, are not part of this consideration, even though they've already voted on it and approved it.
Okay. Questions?
Question. Which of the 1,300s is almond larvae?
You might be able to tell on the map.
It's right in there, yeah.
It's right here. Zero, this 1,300 right here.
Well, there's two 1,300. There's one on the left and one on the right.
That's correct. The one to the north of the subject property is the school district.
And Getman Road becomes part of the City of Hermiston?
Just up to the end of, from what I understand, the road is going to be approved to city standards up to the end of the subdivision on Getman Road. And our Public Works Director is here, he could probably speak to that a little bit more, but we don't have the equipment to maintain city-approved streets. And so that would be, they would take care of the maintenance and ownership of that roadway up to that point. Is that correct, Tom?
Actually, I believe that that road, when it was put in, because of our joint management agreement at the time, when the city, or when the school district put that in, it should have been put into city standards at that time. The only part of that that should be missing at this point would be the curb and sidewalk portion all the way from 207 to that, I don't remember the name of the street, the street that goes back to the.
Is it Ninth Street?
Ninth Street. Good name goes to the school.
Yeah. So from there to 207 should have been paved and built to city standard, what is currently there, with the exception of curb and sidewalk.
Other questions?
That road is intended to still remain county road, or I thought I read in there somewhere where the city was going to assume that one.
I think just the part that's in front, the front edge in front of the proposed subdivision.
From the east border to the 207?
I believe that's correct.
Yeah, from there all the way to 207 on the left.
Is this a subdivision in the red? That's a subdivision.
And it is paved now?
It's paved all the way from 207 to just past Ninth Street, right now.
Did I read in here that the city is assuming that piece of road?
I didn't.
They're annexing it. I don't know if they're actually going to assume jurisdiction, but they, I mean, they will actually, it will be within the city limits.
Other questions? All right. The process we're following this morning, all testimony has to be directed toward the criteria that we're looking at for this, and Bob outlined that in his staff report. And as we go through the hearing this morning, proponents will go first, then opponents. Also, I will see if there's anyone representing, is there anyone representing the City of Hermiston? The city is not here this morning. So at this time, and Bob, thank you for your report, I'll call for those individuals that are a proponent. And I think Frank, that you had listened. So if you want to testify, go ahead.
Yeah. My name is Frank Garing. I live at 79344, Purnellus Road in Hermiston. I've been there in Hermiston since 2000, the year 2000. I've been there in Hermiston since 2000, the year 2000. And primarily built homes for quite a while, but have started to venture out, and now I'm a developer. So at this piece of property, I looked around town in Hermiston for different pieces of property, always run into people, seem to want quite a bit for the pieces of property. I negotiated with the owners of this property for about a year to purchase it, and am working with the city of Hermiston right now, actually have submitted a subdivision plan, preliminary, in which it'll have 46 homes, also have covenants. They're not finalized, will be finalized before the subdivision goes in. The covenants will restrict, actually, the building of duplexes, which was mentioned in the report, that it's going to be zoned for duplexes. One of the reasons for zoning, the particular zoning that I did with the city of Hermiston was that they could, or I could actually put a little more coverage on a lot for a house, which allows a little more space for me to build a nicer house, or allows a property owner to possibly cover a patio or something further down the road, a little more coverage on lots, one of the reasons I did that. Basically, what I understand, my agreement is with the city of Hermiston, is to take care of all frontage along Getman Road, which will end up with sewer and water and sidewalks and curbs all the way down from the east end of the property to the west end on Getman And I'm happy to take care of that part. We're building across from the school right there. I think it would be a great asset, understanding the need for houses in the county. You know, I went to Hermiston's Planning Commission on how they need houses, and also Pendleton's had a meeting not too long ago, a convention, about houses also. And there is a real need for houses in the county. And even in Hermiston, I, the homes I'm going to build on here, the average cost will be between $275,000 to $325,000, and possibly higher, depending on how product comes in. But they'll be nicer homes, and there's people that come from tri-cities, and I've heard it also here in Pendleton, come from tri-cities because that's where they have to live, there's not enough places for them. And so there really is a need, the same thing in Hermiston, for these houses, and I think it's a great location with the schools across the way, for families to come, move in, and have a place for their kids, not too far away.
Frank, what's the average size of the lots?
The average size of a lot, I would say, right around 8,500.
Okay.
The smallest lot is 8,000, and I actually have a few, because of the way the canal is there, we had to create some flag lots. I actually have a few of the lots, one is, the largest is over 14,000. So there's, I'm going to say there's about 15 lots over 9,000 square feet, and some as high as 14,000.
Okay. So the low-density means it isn't an apartment? I mean, that's not low-density. As houses go, is it?
I, what's that now?
Well, I heard it referred to as low-density, somewhere earlier in the conversation. Is that true? Bob, was referred to as low-density?
Being rezoned to.
R2, I think.
R2.
Which is a larger lot size.
Didn't seem like it was low-density. I'm not only having problems with it, I just, other than the.
Yeah, it's an R2 zoning, which I'm not sure what exactly that means in terms of their zoning.
I only ask, Bob, because low dens, I mean, 8,000 square foot lot seems pretty boutique, isn't it?
Yeah, I think that's pretty standard for a residential, an urban residential lot, I think that's city standard, 80 by 100.
Yeah, and that does seem normal, it didn't strike me as low-density.
I don't have the paper here, but I know that Hermiston recently changed their lot sizes, specifications, and made them available for smaller lots, or bigger lots to be divided into smaller lots.
Yeah, Prindle Loop is low-density. Prindle Loop is low-density.
Yes.
My daughter lives there, so.
Okay, other questions? Any other proponents for this?
Let me ask one question, was it not part of the proceeding also, you have assumed the responsibility to improve Getman from 207 to the edge, as far as putting in curbs, sidewalks, and so on, to bring it up to city standards?
Yes.
And that is your obligation to do that?
That is my obligation for the subdivision's approval.
Yeah, if I could interject, there is a irrevocable consent agreement that was required, so that they would bring that road up to standard, even if the subdivision wasn't developed.
Okay, other questions? All right, at this time, we'll move in, since there's no other proponents, we'll move into opponents of this. Gary?
Yes. Thank you, my name is Gary Stoles, I live at 150 West Getman Road. My wife and I raise a family there, we've lived there for 38 years. Did the commissioners get to read the letter that a lot of the residents on the road directed to the Yumitala Department of Land Use Planning? There was, I believe, a dozen signatures on that, and it's on the last two pages of the application.
Yes, included in our fact check.
You got to read that, each of you, is that right?
Yes. Did you want, since it's in this packet, did you want to submit that officially for the record?
We, is there any changes to the letter, Gary?
Okay.
So if it's in the record, then I think we should be fine with what we have.
Okay. Getman Road is a main artery, and what we're doing here by allowing this, I think Frank's going to do a great job down there, don't get me wrong, but I think there's a problem that needs to be addressed, and it's really good streaming, since they put in that new middle school, the traffic on that road. Anyway, it's a main artery, I read a piece in the paper a while back, that long-range planning, they're going to take Getman Road all the way out to Highway 395. And that is a whole, a plan, a wish, whatever. Okay, an LID would not work for improving the road because of the large pay fields, ag lots, and that. This board, I feel, let the school district slide five years ago when they annexed the middle school property into the city. At that time, I had heard, and a lot of us living on the road, that the whole Getman Road was going to be paved and taken care of. Somehow, rather, the school district got by on that, and only did two blocks of the road. Since then, the school district has converted an old grocery store into a very nice office space for the school district. Also, they have built a new football field that is probably coveted by every school district in eastern Oregon. At some time, we've got to address the condition of this road. At the meeting in Hermiston on, I believe it was the 14th of August, Dennis Burke, one of the residents on the road, stated that a car ended up on its side in front of his house. We've all driven on washboard roads, and it's real easy to lose control if you get to go a little too fast. Now, our middle school cross-country team runs up and down the road, using it for practice. Here, oh, a month ago, I was out by my barn, and I counted 34 kids living on that road. Sometime, we have to get something done to either reduce the traffic, or pave it, take care of it properly. Three years ago, I wrote a letter to the commissioners, at that time, I believe Commissioner Elfanger was the director of the board, and I said, there's just really a simple and expensive answer to this whole problem. The irrigation ditch at Maxwell was replaced, the bridge over Maxwell was replaced there on Getman Road, probably about 20 years ago. It's a plank-type bridge. If that was inspected, possibly, the condition of it has deteriorated to where there's some barricades completely erected on top of that bridge, closing the road right there, just shut it down. I think that would provide a wake-up call for the city of Hermiston, because all the traffic going up and down that road would have to go on into Hermiston, do that or not defeat that road. Put a sign on each end of the road that the road's closed at the bridge, that would be a simple, a simple solution. The only person that it would affect negatively is that there is, I believe his last name is Wolf, there's a trucker that lives on the road, and a lot of times, he comes in from the west end of that road to go home. Occasionally, he comes in from the east end, when he's delivering fuel out of the east end of town. That's all I got, thank you for your time.
Okay, questions? Would that, in your mind, would it solve the problem of all these folks that have signed it, and your problem if that road was simply paved?
If it was paved, yeah, you know, the county is in that letter there, the county does a good job of grading the road, taking care of it, you know, but three days after they do that, the washboards are right back. At least, you're not going to have cars losing control. I've had my fence, I live at the corner of Getman at first, my fence has been hit probably at least four times that I know of, because we were all kids at one time, and, you know, we get on a piece of gravel, and we kind of like to slide sideways a little bit, and that has happened several times. If it's pavement, they're not going to be doing that. You know, you're not going to have that washboard taking cars out of control and ending up on their side. True, they're going to be driving probably faster up and down that road, which is not a problem, and right now, if there's no wind blowing, the dust is just crazy on that road, and it just hangs in there. That, you know, it's a safety concern, and the traffic is just getting more and more on that road.
Okay. Gary, thank you. Any other questions? At this time, there's a period where, Frank, you can make rebuttal to the comments or make suggestions?
Just what Gary has said, you know, after I had first looked at the property, of course, I drove on up that road, and I don't disagree with him at all, looked bad up that way. Challenges are, what I ran into with talking to the city of Hermiston, the railroad runs through there, and they wanted a million dollars flat-out to fix that part, is what Clint Spencer told me from the city planner, and just to fix that part, to bring it up to where it would help the road coming in. And then, the rest of the road, to pave it all the way to Getman, Clint mentioned it'd probably be another million dollars, so $2 million to do it just wasn't feasible within their budgets, is what he said. But I don't disagree with how the road is, and I kind of tried to think of solutions that might help, I don't know, I thought of a chip seal and things like that, and we discussed that, I think, well, no, we did discuss that a little bit at the Hermiston planning meeting about chip seal, and the longevity of a chip seal, how long that would last. On a road less traveled, I think it was like five years, something like that, so this one is pretty well-traveled, though, so it's kind of a challenge. I know one thing that I intend to do, because I have been out there doing some infiltration, some testing on that land, plus some surveying, people come down that road pretty fast. My intentions are definitely to put some signs up once I start some construction, because I need to slow them down, I got guys there. And so that would be a great concern, once that, once that if the road did get paved, they need to slow down, and I'm not sure how and who's going to patrol it, or what jurisdiction it's in. Yeah, I just don't disagree with the road, it's sloppy that way, and I'm not sure, I guess it's county road.
At this point in time, the jurisdiction is county, it's forced law enforcement has been, Doug, or the city?
Yeah, it'd be within the county jurisdiction.
So you have a sheriff, under sheriff sitting right next to you. I'm putting him on his block.
As much as possible, periodically, we'll get complaints from neighbors in the area, and that'll initiate us to go out and run some radar there on the road, but I don't know that we've had any major or serious crashes there that I can recall without going through records that were due to excessive speed, but we will provide speed control anytime, or we can anytime, certainly anytime a resident calls.
I guess the conclusion that I heard from the city of Hermiston was that it all came down to the budget that they, it seemed like, and I understand that, I have a budget that I'm doing for the subdivision, so that's about it.
I can honestly say that chip sealing or paving a road doesn't always eliminate problems, sometimes it creates them. I know, I sit on a paved road, and it's, from time to time, the drag race capital of Hermiston, because it is, because it is hard surface. So at least with the gravel out there, they're not doing that, I suppose, but there's never a good answer.
Any comments, Tom, on?
For just our clarification, we agree that it is a county road, and they would be required to do the ICA agreement, as well as obtain access permits, I went back and found communication about that.
Tom and I visit about Getman from time to time, I get more calls on Getman than any other road, I've spoken the length of the Key family.
We do, too.
I know you do, and I don't know the solution, but we certainly are aware that of all the roads in the county, Getman would rise close to the top in terms of a problem, because it was never intended to bear the traffic load it now bears, ever.
Yeah, that's what growth has done to a lot of our county roads.
I'd like to ask, Gary, there is, there's mention in the dialogue here about school buses?
Yes.
And do they come in from the west side, or they come in on the east end of Getman and come to the school that way?
You know, there's one, as the letter said, there's one kid that lives on the road, and that bus always comes in from the east end of Getman Road, and either drops off or picks up the kid. But there are buses that deliver both middle school and. But there are buses that deliver both middle school and high school. And they come, after they drop them off at the middle school, they come right up to Getman Road and ride down to, to the school. There's two stop signs and they're there. They don't have to fight traffic.
They come over to First?
Yeah, yep, and then ride down to, to the four-way stop there at the school.
And somewhere in there indicates the city of Hermiston's going to take that up with the, with the school district?
Well, they, they put a conditional use permit on the school district.
That they were going to ask the school to live by that? Apparently, they're not.
But they're, at the meeting back in August, they were joking about it. You know, "How are we going to enforce that? You know, we're going to arrest the principal at the school?" They're not taking it seriously. It's very evident.
You mentioned impossible to do a live.
Yes.
Say that again, because of the larger landowners?
Yes, yes, there's, there's a, right across the road from me, there's a thirty-five acre hay field. And then on down from it, the south side of that road is pretty much hay. Yeah.
And of course, they don't want to have to pay for that amount of.
Understandably so.
Okay, other, other rebuttal? Okay, is there a reason for a continuance?
I think, we have, we have two issues. One is the desire to provide for more housing expand. The other is that Getman Road, Getman Road is going to be a problem regardless of what we do. And I don't know what the answer is. We obviously don't, it's going to cost a lot to do something with it, but it's going to be a problem under any circumstance.
Right. I certainly, at this point in time, we don't have a request for a continuance. So I'm going to close this portion of the public hearing for deliberation. So at this time, the hearing is closed. I, I would add in, in regards to deliberation, Gary, I would really work with the school district and the city again if there was an agreement. I know it's frustrating, but going to a school board meeting and holding this agreement and their feet to the fire on it. And I, I get it. I know that all entities, whether it's the city, the school district, or the county, or developers, or landowners, nobody has an abundance of money to just say, "Oh, well, we'll fix the problem and pay for it." But I'd certainly encourage more and continued dialogue with the city and the, and the school district on that if they've agreed to do that. But having just openly joke about it, basically maybe say, "Too bad." That's not a good situation.
Bob, what is it? What is the, where's the hammer?
Well, our, our decision today is just for the co-adoption.
Yeah, no, what I'm asking is, what can the city or the county, in the case of a conditional use, what can be used to enforce it?
Well, if there are conditions assigned to their conditional use that specifically asks the school to identify bus routes and stick to those, I don't know the language of that, that permit, that they could hold, you know, they could hold them to that. I, I guess the solution would be, you know, I don't, I don't think they could, they could, but I don't think it would be popular to revoke their permit, but maybe talk to them about it and have a meeting to say, "This is what was originally understood by the condition assigned to your permit. We would appreciate it if you stick to that."
In the case of a, of a business, the business could be shut down.
Yeah, if it were a.
Hard to shut a school down.
Yeah, it's hard to shut a school down.
But the.
Conflex.
It would bring attention to it.
But the county has the, the option of convening also, do we not?
We do.
And is not a portion of Getman Road in the county?
It is in the county, yes.
So we could ask our chair to convene a joint conversation with the city and the, and the school district to discuss Getman Road.
So. We're only talking about four school buses today.
Right.
But I think it is a broader conversation. It would be beneficial to have.
And remember, all we're doing though today, there's some avenues we need to go through. All we're doing today is making determination on whether to co-adopt. If we chose not to co-adopt, the result would be to carry on more meetings that it would then not allow Frank to be able to develop a subdivision in this area.
Well, I would vote, I would fully intend to vote to co-adopt, but I would not want to abandon.
No.
The directive to have the convening of that session.
I don't see where, where failing to co-adopt would really solve the problem. Getman Road is going to be, Getman Road is going to be a problem, whatever happens here. And we need to move beyond this and solve that problem as, as been proposed with, with the city and the school district. So, Mr. Chair, I'd move approval or ordinance two oh one seven dash fourteen, co-adopting the city of Hermiston's ordinance.
Second? Been moved and second, that we approve the ordinance in order to co-adopt. And with that, I would add that we will continue working on some of these other issues with school district, student and the city. See if we can come to a better resolution on, on that particular road. With that, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And council, can I make a second motion related that the chair be instructed to convene such a conversation?
Is that a motion?
Yes.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and second, that I convene a conversation with the school district, city and county, three. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, other comments? Frank and Gary, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, I, I want to change our order here just for a minute. Eli was not here at the beginning, I think you were unable to, you got tied up.
Yes, I'm sorry.
I want to take a few minutes, we already have public input, but we'll go back for just a minute for you to address the board or.
Yep, thank you, appreciate it. I guess I'm here today because it's been an eight-year struggle with the Rodeo City Inn Hotel. And I went to the commissioners months ago, well, let me, let me stay in prime and while in full order. I worked with Jim and Terry. We finally got the Rodeo City Inn shut down. Wheels of justice are slow, but it got accomplished. Then, now that it's shut down for the last three years, it's been a public nuisance and an eyesore. I was broken into again a month ago, about, kicked in one of my doors. So it's just been a headache. But through all of this, Doug has worked with the, with the sheriff's department. Doug has been the, the main focus on it. And I guess people like the four of you probably hear bitch and screaming, but you don't, you don't get the, the thank yous very much. So sheriff's department, Doug, county commissioners, wow, thanks. My understanding is you've got that letter out to the owner that basically says, "Fix it, you've got your on here sixty days, fix it or we will." I'm seeing light at the end of the tunnel. So I can't really speak for Woodpecker, but I'm sure Woodpecker is just as happy as I am to see this light at the end of the tunnel after eight years of unbelievable, unbelievable stuff. I mean, at one point, the sheriff's department were up on the balcony serving a warrant and they watched these two yahoos come out of the back of my garage that was locked. They had to break into it. Back of my garage, walk up towards the motel. And when they got up towards the motel, the two deputies realized they don't have the duffel bags they were carrying. So they arrested them, went back, found the duffel bags, my stuff. And they, they were able to arrest them on and on. Not just the break-ins, the vandalism, the litter, the, the headaches, the constant headaches, but Doug, wow, thank you. I'm seeing light at the end of the tunnel. So I can go on, but thank you.
The tunnel comes to an end. Not just the light.
So I'm glad you're here.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yep. Okay, that's all I had. I just, I'm sure you guys get enough pounding demanding. I just want to take the time and say thank you.
Well, Eli, thank you. I know citizens would like when they have a complaint phoned in the sheriff or phone a complaint with county commissioners or county council. They wanted it done yesterday and they oftentimes don't understand, there's a long, lengthy process. And it's even frustrating to us at times because we want it resolved too for those folks. So again, we're on the track to get it taken care of, though, and thanks.
And whenever the time comes to actually board it up, you know, I'm in the, in the trades, so if you need a vendor, well, not me. I'm too close to it, so not me, but I, I do know vendors that would, you know, that are qualified.
All right.
So, okay, thank you gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, Eli, thanks for being here.
Sorry, I'm late.
Oh, no problem. Okay, the Harris Park storage shed, or Doug, or whoever's going to do this?
Basically, Harris Park is at a point now, this has been in our plan for quite some time to purchase and erect a storage shed. We've got a great deal of equipment that in winter time, park outside, number of picnic tables and things. And so we just need a little more storage space. We finally got some of our other projects under control and so we're asking board commissioners to go out and request for proposals for a kit to erect our own storage shed at Harris Park.
Questions?
Will this be, you're asking for a contractor to do this, or you're asking for a prefab steel building?
What we're, what we're going to do is, our intent is, is to go out and just get a, a kit and then we will use park staff and, and then whatever little bit that we do need to contract, we will. So it's going to be kind of a joint venture thing. The majority of these kits that we've looked at are kind of like erector sets. If you follow the directions, that they, they go up pretty, pretty easily. And it should, should serve us really well, I think.
Good thing I'm not doing that. I could never make an erector set work.
You could come read the rectus force.
Slot A into tab B. All those things with Mr. Chair, move approval of the, that the request for proposals will be moved forward.
Second? Been moved and second, that we have the Harris Park storage shed proposal approved. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, utility task vehicle purchase?
Yes.
Are you presenting that or?
I am, I'm presenting that. We're seeking authorization to go out for bids for utility task vehicles with the car that everybody recruits them in side-by-side, which are enclosed four-wheel vehicles that we would primarily use this to augment our snowmobile patrols. We are tasked with running snowmobile patrols in the mountains, mostly in the Tolgate area during the winter months. Currently, we provide those patrols now on ten-year-old snowmobiles. We think this will provide us a safer platform to send up our personnel and our clothes side-by-side. It'll also give us the ability to, once it's equipped with snow tracks and we have a winter like we did last year, it'll provide us the ability to do some more search and rescue missions, possibly remove an injured person from a remote location more safely. There's a lot of uses for this type of vehicle, so we're just seeking to, to ask for some bids. We've talked to a couple of dealers, they, they are pricing at around the twenty-three to twenty-five thousand dollar range. Annually, we receive a ten thousand dollar grant from the Oregon Snowmobile Association which goes into a fund that we would propose if we are to purchase one would come from that fund. I think there are a little forty-three thousand dollar in the fund currently. We just had a commitment from the Snowmobile Association to provide another ten thousand next month. So the cost of this vehicle would be covered by the, the grant funding that comes from the Snowmobile Association.
Jim, basically, if I understand this right, you're asking for something very similar to a ski patrol vehicle or a grooming vehicle? Basically, a snow cab?
I don't know if it's a snow, it's a, it's a side-by-side, four-wheel drive, side-by-side, enclosed, something like that, yeah. And then we would add a track, a track system to allow it to operate in the snow, but we could also use it during other times of the year with the tires and wheels to augment our ATV patrol or whatever, so there's multiple purposes for it.
That was my question, is whether it could be converted for summertime use as well?
Sure, absolutely.
I'm not sure I would even know what one of those looks like, except last winter, that's what my son used. I know he used it to feed stranded cattle.
There's times when our search and rescue people can't reach somebody with their current snow machines. Again, if they found somebody injured, they would be able to provide a way to haul them out to an ambulance or something. So there's, again, multiple uses for the vehicle and we have grant funds available for it.
Mr. Chair, approval of the authorization issue, invitation for bids?
Second? Been moved and second, to allow the sheriff's department to go out for bids for a utility task vehicle. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Be sure to thank the snowmobile club for the counter too. Request for vehicle for veterans.
There's one before.
Oh, I'm sorry, request for sheriff vehicles.
So I understand now that we've received a bid from a local vendor for Ford vehicles, that we now have to open it up for bids for other dealers, is that correct, Doug?
That is correct.
We, we received a bid from Comdental Ford on some patrol vehicles. They came in about six hundred dollars less than what we're paying for at the state bid. However, they, the bid that they provided lacks some equipment that we get from state bid vehicles, so we'd have to work that out with them. And we think the cost from a local dealer will be at or the same as the state bid. We've had, and I understand now that we have to open it up, we have to accept bids from all the dealers who submit a bid. We did this a few years ago with a pickup that we purchased and the dealership that was awarded the bid was from Newport. And so we purchased the vehicle from this dealer in Newport, but it took a year to get it. And that created confusion with finance about when it was funded. So I, I guess my point is, when we go through the state bid, it's a simple process. We essentially will call them up and say, "We need five patrol vehicles," and they know exactly what we want and they come exactly as equipped. We require that they're pre-wired when they come from the dealer so that we can essentially plug and play our equipment in. If they're not that way, then we have to pay for somebody to essentially tear out the insides for wiring in, which is at an additional cost and, and takes more time. So while we, we always like to go with local dealers and hope that they come in at somewhere near the state bid, it's a matter of, I guess, essentially training the new dealers about how we want the vehicles to be equipped and that's the process. It delays our ability to get the vehicles. It delays our ability to get the vehicles. And so we, how long do we have to have the bid open now to?
For this one, the plan would be, if once it's issued, to have the bids ready for the board to award it November 1st.
November 1st.
Why can't the request for proposals include the work that is being provided by dealers somewhere else? Obviously, he gets the vehicle from somewhere back eastwards manufactured. Why is that different, or why would it have to be different for a dealer here to be able to enter that market?
That's a good question. That's a dealer question. We send them the specs that we would like, and so when we get a bid back, sometimes something's missing off of the specs, and so we have to go back to the dealer and say, can you, why can't you do this? Can't you do this? Why isn't it on there?
If it's part of their, part of their bid, then it's their obligation to provide that and get it done.
Yes. That creates a delay. I mean, then we have to go back to them versus calling the state bid, who knows everything? And we get the vehicles as spec, and all we have to tell them is, we need three, or we need four, or we need five, and they come exactly like we want them.
But obviously, the state has provisions in their request for proposals from various dealers as to what they expect that vehicle to look like.
Right.
It seems to me that our request for proposals could do the same thing.
It should.
Specify this is what that vehicle's to look like.
Right.
So that when it's delivered to you, and it should be timely, I mean, not tomorrow. I mean, I think I waited three months for mine, my vehicle to come.
Right.
But I just have always felt that it was wrong to shut local businesses out of the vending process with the county.
Sure. Well, I agree. And again, anytime we have an opportunity to shop locally, we'll do that. We just want to make sure that we get these things in a timely manner and that they're equipped like we want them, because if they're not, then it takes more time and more expense to have them redone and essentially being fixed.
I understand that the city of Pendleton gets their police into their Ford interceptors locally, and they come equipped the way they need them to be?
Yeah, I don't know.
And is that some more equipment?
I don't know what their specs are versus what ours are.
I don't either.
But, yes, Tom Dentrel came in at $600 less. We'll have to work out why there were things missing off their bid. Again, it's frustrating for us when, essentially, once you have a vendor trained about how you want things, and go to somebody else and try to retrain them about what you need. So we want them in a timely manner, and the vehicle that we had, spec out of Newport, the one that did, took them a year to get it to us, when we could have got it from a state contract in a timely manner. They're used to dealing with large quantities of vehicles. And Gretchen Ford, for example, they sell 80 of them or 100 of them to Portland, and so they know what they're doing and can get them to you quickly, versus calling a small dealer who does this very rarely, and has to order them and then get them in, and then who knows what happened at the dealership.
Personally, at the time, you don't have bids, you run the inherent risk of a dealer beginning to take advantage as well, any vendor. When they're the sole vendor, eventually, they find a way that that becomes, that a local dealer would be able to compete with that.
Yeah, we hope that they will, and so we'll see what we get back on the bids.
Dan, looking for motion.
Well, I would also like to add, I think, don't we have provisions in timely delivery on time?
Sure. We can specify in there exactly how long.
Recently appreciated, the two-day delivery. And we've also had, I thought, some provisions that deal with proximity.
Only warranty work. We don't, we just have to have the ability within a certain parameter around the county for warranty work. So basically, all the local dealers get all the.
My understanding, under Sheriff Willem Field's concerns, I also like the idea of training a local vendor. I certainly am happy with what happened, what happened in my case. I'm delighted.
So we don't have a motion on the table yet?
No.
I would move that we authorize issuance and invitation to bid.
Sir, second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, we authorize invitation to bid. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, let's move on. Veterans?
This is basically very similar to the last request. The veterans is seeking to purchase three vehicles, one to replace, and they're just going to see if they have the funding to purchase the three vehicles.
Okay, questions?
No. Don't worry about this.
All right.
I assume.
Second?
Been moved and seconded, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Community corrections, reclassification?
Good morning, Commissioners, Dale, Commissioner, Director, Umatilla County Community Justice. This has been an ongoing conversation that I think I've had with both my liaison commissioner and Commissioner Murdock as it relates to some budget things. We have one classification within our department that is fairly unique and is, proves to be a little bit counterproductive in long-term retention of employees. And that is our PO1, PO2 classification. In order to move into a PO2 classification, it requires an intermediate certificate and a bachelor's degree. In the absence of a bachelor's degree, there's no capacity to ultimately promote into a PO2 classification, regardless of length of time, certification level, or other. My proposal is, is to change the classification to allow for an individual without a bachelor's degree to achieve PO2 status once their advanced certification is achieved. So for clarification with a person without a bachelor's degree, that would take 13 years of service and some 240 hours of training hours. It does not affect any other classification within the UCLA agreement, as well as it would bring that classification into continuity with the Sheriff's Department's deputy and senior deputy classifications, for which they've already poached one of my employees for, with this being a primary issue that led to Jeff's decision to do, to do exactly that. It would affect currently one employee in my department, has the potential to impact three, albeit the other two, I don't believe, would have enough time really left in their career probably to realize this as a benefit. For me, it's a fairness issue when I look at the one employee that's been in my department. Well, obviously, more than 13 years. To see that individual justice-trained, more certified, quite frankly, than others, dependent upon as much or more than others that are paid at a rate that is significantly higher, and I philosophically believe that at some point, that experience ought to catch up with that education. Now, this does not negate the benefit and the incentive of education, because those people who have that, that education level, receive that level of certification roughly seven years sooner. So for me, I think it allows for retention and incentivizing training, as well as, it's a fairness issue, I think, for very few employees, but quite frankly, they're just as trained, just as educated in the field, and do the same work.
Questions?
Now, we discussed this in our study session, and I think, I think it's a pretty high bar to do this based on the provision, so I would move for adoption.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded, we adopt. The question?
A quick question.
Yeah.
Are there any other positions in the county that this might have implications for?
Not within, not within the association, no.
Okay. Okay, other questions? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And I think you have the next one.
I do. So the next one is a, is a request for the ability for us to replace windows on both the west and south side of the main community corrections office south, adjacent to the for whatever reason, the windows put in the building in 1996, when that building was constructed, are not handling the heat that comes from the south and west sun. Quite frankly, it's baking all of the sealant out of the windows, which then they lose their insulation value. And the last few times we've called maintenance, we've actually called them because our windows are laying on the ground, and there's a hole in the side of our building where there once was a window. I think we've had that occurrence three times now, and finally, the last occurrence, the advice from maintenance was, is basically, all of the windows on the west and south side have lost their insulation value. The caulking and sealant around the windows is cracking, and we've just got to deal with the issue. So with that, we had maintenance go out, they went out for three bids, lowest, some one bid didn't separate out the, didn't really separate it out by the north, south, west, east, you know, the segmenting that off, so we could break up the cost. Two others came back with that, and the lowest bid came in at $9,997.18. Integrity glass and door, I think that's here, though.
Question?
Western?
No.
Yeah.
Have you considered, have you considered just boarding them up?
Well, Eli knows a guy.
Chair approval?
Sir, second? Been moved and seconded, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
No baseball playing out back either?
No. No stand-in law back there.
Okay, thanks, Dale.
Thank you.
Bopta appointments?
Let me do it, Doug.
Sure.
Terry Carty, Don Daggett, and now Carol Wallace.
Christine.
What?
Christine.
Christine Wallace. And one of our efforts with our citizen committees is to try to have it be as citizen-based as possible. This is a new move for Bopta, to make it completely citizen-based. I strongly support this and move we make these appointments.
Second? Been moved and seconded, that we make this a citizen-based appointment. How did we go about picking the citizens?
The liaison to that particular function, looked around the county and has tried to provide balance, which means we have qualified people from Hermiston, Pendleton, and Freeland.
Did these folks apply?
No, they did not. The two have been, well, let's see, Mr. Carty's been there at least three or four years, and Mr. Gagett, I think, has been two years.
People don't stand in line to do this.
Okay. Any other questions? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Sidewalk replacement. Dan?
Good morning, Commissioners. We received one bid for the sidewalk. Previously, we had a bid for the sidewalk replacement. It came in over the amount that required us to go for prevailing wage, which was a correction. We were under the assumption that was $75,000. It was actually $50,000, and our previous bid was $65,000. With that said, we went ahead and decided to go ahead and replace the other sidewalk that we were going to do at a later date because of some other reasons and timing, but we went ahead and merged them together. So now we have the front parking, the front, which is the west side of the building, which is redoing the sidewalks, so we can work towards our single entry to the building, and then replacing our east sidewalk over here, which is actually the one that's in the worst shape. I don't know if you gentlemen have walked around there, but it actually looks like gravel.
I tripped on, fell and hurt my knee.
So trying to help out Commissioner Gibbons, so he doesn't.
I don't care. But it's a matter of time.
And.
It's better than age.
No.
The total cost for the project, though, is $146,224.09. We originally had $40,000 set aside for the project, so it is $106,224.09 over what we originally had.
Dan, could our maintenance staff, Mark, could they just do the whole thing themselves and cut costs and save money?
Well, Mark could pour the concrete, so he can do part of that, but the problem is, we do not have the equipment to demo that, and also, we have to try to do it with timing without the courts being in session. So the demolition and the equipment to level this front part, we really have to bring somebody in to do that portion.
Okay.
And when you're doing it that way, people want to do the easier part two to be able to fund it, because that's a lot of work to do the demo. So it is very challenging to remove this.
Does the bid include the new parking spaces paving and that sort of thing?
It includes asphalting the patch to fix the, to go with the transition from the sidewalk to the actual street, so there will be asphalt. So it includes the asphalt that, so there'll be a seamless transition.
Okay.
The striping, though, we will do the striping.
It does include the transition.
The transition to it, but the striping is what the maintenance department will do the striping. We're in the process of purchasing a striping machine, so we can restripe all of our parts.
Now, the road department bought a new paint striping machine.
A little hard to navigate with little 20-inch lines throughout the courthouse, or that. It might turn out crooked to.
What?
On a more serious note, how are we on touching?
Robert, I had the conversation in advance of this process.
Certainly, I will negotiate the funding as needed. However, another $100,000 out of the budget is never easy, and certainly don't need any extra of those.
But you can come without extra money when we need you to.
It's my job. We don't like it.
We talked a lot, we, Robert, I talked a lot about this, and I think the liability factor, the liability factor's a huge issue that we need to address.
I will state, one of the Commissioners, one of our plans with the front here will be putting piping underneath the sidewalk, so that at a point, we could go ahead and run warm water or put in a system that we could connect into it. This does not include the system, but we're planning ahead by putting piping in there so that we can heat the sidewalk and won't have to put an ice melt on it to provide less liability there. This is a little different option to get water out there, so.
So we're really being environmentally friendly?
Well, the big part is the salt that we put out, or the, no matter, even if they say it's safe, it still deteriorates and we end up with what we have over there, and we create a liability issue.
Progressive universities have heated their sidewalks for many years.
Yes.
I know.
Okay.
Out of absolute possessive.
I'm looking for a motion.
Some of.
Second? Been moved and seconded for the replacement contract, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks, Dan. Supplemental budgets. This is a public hearing, so at that, this point in time, I am going to open the public hearing for supplemental budgets.
Robert Paul, CFO, Umatilla County, today, there are several supplemental budgets before you for consideration. They appeared in the October 10th issue of the East Oregonian for, for the public to review. One, Budget Over 2018-02, the Unitary Assessment Fund. The Unitary Assessment Fund requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services appropriations of $21,275, and a decrease in the contingency appropriations of $21,275. Budget Over 2018-03, Public Works Fund. The Public Works Program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in beginning cash balance of $826,272, an increase in materials and services of $83,000, an increase in capital outlay of $700,000, and a increase in contingency of $43,272. Budget Order 2018-04, School-Based Health Center. The School-Based Health Center Program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in state revenues of $25,000, an increase in contingency of $58,000, and it also requires a decrease in materials and services appropriations by Budget Order 2018-05, Veterans Fund, Veteran Expanded Services. The Veterans Expanded Services Program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in beginning cash balance of $23,755 and an increase in capital outlay of $29,357, and it also requires a decrease in contingency of $5,602. Budget Order 2018-06, Human Services Fund, School-Based Mental Health. The School-Based Mental Health Program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in state revenues of $300,000, an increase in personnel services of $243,000, and an increase in materials and services of $57,000. Budget Order 2018-07, General Fund, Veteran Services. The Veteran Services Program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires a decrease in state revenues of $101,523 and a decrease in the general fund contingency of $101,523. Budget Order 2018-08, General Fund, Victim Witness Program. The Victim Witness Program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in local revenues of $21,275 and an increase in materials and services of $21,275. Any questions or?
Okay, questions or comments?
Robert, with all these being said and done, the, what's the net hit on the general fund?
The net change to general fund contingency is $101,523.
That's the veterans?
Yes.
And that's brought about because state revenues were less than expected?
Yes, when we had developed the budget, there was an estimate that the new state revenue from the bill that passed, the ballot major that passed, was going to be in the estimate of about $150,000. It turned out to be about $48,000. And we, because of that funding, increased services and so that, this budget adjustment adjusts the budget to the point where we are contributing as a general fund about what we did last year.
Okay, I'm going to ask if there's any public here that wants to comment. Okay, not hearing any comments from public. I'll close the hearing and we'll deliberate. We have a total of seven supplemental budgets, so I would entertain motions for adoption of these.
Mr. Chair, Ralphrey has all of those in front of him, I'll let him.
Okay.
Mr. Chair of Approval, Budget Order 2018-02.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, we approve Budget Order 2018-02. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Approval of Budget Order 2018-03, Public Works Fund?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we approve Budget Order 2018-03. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Is that the Getman Road, baby?
Aye, motion carries.
Move Approval of Budget Order 2018-04, School-Based Health Center?
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, we approve Budget Order 2018-04. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Move Approval, Approval of Budget Order 2018-05, Veterans Fund?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, we approve Budget Order 2018-05. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Move Approval of Budget Order 2018-06, Human Services Fund?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, we approve Budget Order 2018-06. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Move Approval of Budget Order 2018-07, General Fund for Victims' Services?
Aye, or second?
Been moved and seconded, we approve Budget Order 2018-07. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Already voted.
Move Approval of Budget Order 2018-08, General Fund for Victims' Witness Program?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we approve Budget Order 2018-08. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Doug, in the future, is there any way we can make a blanket approval?
No. There's separate items.
I'm asking.
And you get the same answer.
Consistent.
So that doesn't include Getman Road?
No.
They certainly have the funds for it.
No, no, we already spent them. No, no.
Oh, I, Tom and I have discussed this multiple occasions, isn't that true?
Does Brad live on Getman?
No, no.
On that bridge?
And there's no cattle company out there, right?
No, I have no conflict of interest, I just have talked to Tom about that for many years.
The last item, not the last item, the next item, our board meeting schedule?
At this point, it looks like there is not a quorum for the November 15th board meeting, so the proposal is to reschedule it to November 22nd.
Is that going to work for all of us?
Yeah. It's the day before Thanksgiving.
Right.
We need a motion on this?
Yes.
Move to change the schedule of the November 15th meeting to November 22nd?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, we change our board meeting from second to the 22nd?
But we kept the December 6th.
Yes.
Because we do have.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right, and the last item on our, before we go into our executive section, is EOTech payable?
EOTech has billed us for the county's share of support for operations for the 2017, 2018 year. They billed us one quarter of what they have budgeted, they budgeted $75,000.
For the year?
For the year. They're going to bill us quarterly, anticipating there might be a difference between what they budgeted and what they will actually need. Later in the year, I will need to make a supplemental budget to the fund that money is paid from because we did not allocate $75,000 to that.
What did we allocate, 45?
50.
50. Okay. In years past, Doug, or Robert, what was our, what had we talked about, the supplemental amount of money going to EOTech?
I think it's 50,000 for the first three years.
Actually, it's 25 and then it moved to 50.
I thought it was 50.
Anyway, we paid 25 for, I want to say three years, and then last year it was $45,190 and this year was, this year it was 75, what they had budgeted for. Depending on, depending on what happens with EOTech, obviously that amount, we're obligated to pay half of their shortfall annually. And so, that's it, that's an annual amount.
Okay. So it's 18,000, what was it again?
750.
18,750. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve that quarterly payment, 18,750. All those in favor of the motion, thank you. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Is there any feeling that you stepped in the long doors and the tatters?
Okay. So that takes us to our executive session.
Did you want to move down to room 121 for that?
We can certainly do that, Doug, I would like, or Robert, I'd like you to say.
You'd like to say?
I.
Absolutely.
I move we take a brief potty break.
So we will recess for five minutes for a, do you need more than that?
No.
We'll recess for five minutes for a quick break and then we'll reconvene to go into the executive session in room 141.
I thought our last.
Our director's meeting came as close to what I recall a meeting of that kind is supposed to look like, where people were comfortable talking as a group of managers, which I've never experienced, witnessed in four years here.
On substantive matters.
On substantive matters, it's, was really a good conversation. So consequently, I think we ought to be really thoughtful about the creation of our agenda for next Wednesday. And we will only perpetuate the value of that meeting if we invest some time in creating an agenda that has meaning for the directors.
The reason that happened was because Tamara was not here anymore.
Well, I understand that.
And people were afraid to comment because they would come under criticism somewhere down the line, maybe it was behind their back, maybe going to someone else. And that's why I did not, or I started not having an open discussion or time for staff input. I will go back to that.
Well, I can, I can name two other people, one, three, one at Douglas ESD, one at the Yumitala Miro ESD, and one at the Pasco School District that all had the same toxic chilling effect on the meeting, so you couldn't discuss anything.
Yeah.
But, so here we are now in a position to have quality meetings.
Yes.
And, and I think it's incumbent on us to invest time in the creation of an agenda that provides value to them.
Well, I, we, yeah, I agree with that, and I intended to do that.
Yeah, so my comment is, is managers' meetings, where we went around the room and everybody said something, about 80% of that was useless information and made those meetings really almost unbearable. So I like the idea of having a limited number of topics of discussion that are beneficial for everyone to know, whether it be, whether it be new developments in the county, whether it be something we're focusing on, certainly to make it useful or, or a training thing, I think, I think that's something that's really valuable to the managers, as several of them were promoted into those positions without having a whole lot of management experience, so.
This is helpful for them.
Some management pointers, that, things that are stupid to do that they shouldn't do.
And I had designed our agendas so that we had specific topics and that was it. If it wasn't on the agenda, we're not covering. We're past that. We can go ahead and have portion for comments.
Okay.
We don't have to go around and say, okay, what's going on in, in road department, what's going on in, in HR and so on and so forth.
As long as it doesn't deteriorate back into the meetings, we both remember.
Well, that can be done by simply having, asking for, is there any other issues we need to?
My take, Robert needs to outline the next steps in the budget process for them.
And I know Robert.
Certainly, I would be willing to engage everyone there.
I think. Tom Roberts would like to bring the discussion of the people that he needs from throughout the county to the managers rather than broadcast to everyone.
What we did last time, Melinda, send a reminder out, topics for our directors.
I think it would be good to.
Need to be sent in to.
It would be good to explain how the sidewalk fits what you're doing out in front. I think people would be interested in knowing how that construction fits in with a longer-term plan for security.
What's happening with their workplace?
I think it's also important to remind them once again, they do not send delegates.
Yes. Now, been a couple of times.
They either come, they either come in person.
Tom had to be gone because he had that Oasis training.
So Public Works doesn't come?
Well, he let me know ahead of time.
No, no, I see, but nobody comes from Public Works.
If he can't come.
Oh, if he can't come.
Yeah.
Yeah, they just miss it.
So, the other, and I just learned this, when we left room 121, I mean, 114, Tom has been appointed to serve on the Oasis Committee at the NACO level. And he did not want to do that.
I was gonna say, that doesn't really sound like Tom to me.
No, it was not. He was not there.
Oh.
Oh, no.
I'm missing out on one of those meetings.
And they, because of his work on this transportation plan, so.
I think it's a credit to the quality of leadership we're putting together.
I did.
Paul's on the board of LOC and Robert just got his, his appointment. I mean, if we're gonna have, if we're gonna have a good administrative team, then that kind of stuff's gonna happen.
Tom wanted to know if we would support him, and I told him we would. It'll mean he'll have to be going back to DC at our legislative conference, so.
One or two meetings he has to attend, a lot of teleconference.
We kind of have started supporting it formally, like we did with Paul and Dale. I don't think it's a bad thing for us to acknowledge that in a meeting.
And that was not on our agenda, can we go ahead and, because we're still in our, so I entertain a motion that we.
Well, can we do that?
Well, yeah, sure. Well, because I mean, there wasn't any one president anyway for the regular reading, so it just let it come back.
That we support Tom's appointment to the NACO, what is it, NACO what?
NACO Transportation Committee.
We might just as well add Robert into supporting his participation in the leadership program.
I would second those.
Those.
That was a motion.
Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 That was mentioned at city council last night.
Oh, it was?
That our support for Paul and Dale.
Okay, you were, you were at that night's city council?
It was, it was supported, I mean, it was.
This is been with the city council.
Yeah, acknowledged by the Pemberton City Council that they appreciate our doing that.
All right, anything else?
No, that's the longest board, board meeting I've seen in four years.